Nobody wants to interview this evening.
I'm used to it, I'll re-interview.
He knows how to do this.
I'll warm the seat up. He's a pro at it. Don't be all, don't be practiced for us.
I have some questions.
I have some questions too.
Please no engaging with the audience. Those are your patent.
Oh my gosh.
Or annual letter.
Good evening, Mr. Tate, how are you?
I am excellent, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. Thank you for applying and being here this evening for the interview. So just for the record, you did get the, there were three questions in advance that you did receive those.
I did.
In preparation, well, perfect. So we will get started here. So tell us a little bit about yourself and what is it that appeals to you about serving on the city council?
Okay, well, probably the most important thing or the first thing I would want people to know about me is that I am a husband. And that is the most important thing that I do. And it is the, is the one thing that I would want on my gravestone if they were only going to put one thing. Obviously, you want to know some more things. The second thing that I would probably need you to know is the thing that's getting hard for me to say because I haven't done it for very long and that is I am retired. I retired on the 31st of December and so I've had to wear this title now for 10 days. But I had a almost 40-year career as an executive in not-for-profit work. I spent 26 years with the Boy Scouts of America in Washington, California, and concluded that career in New York City. And then in 2012, moved back to the area to become the Executive Director of the Northwest Osteopathic Medical Foundation, which is a not-for-profit that came from the sale of the old East Moreland Hospital, if you've been around long enough and are familiar with those kinds of things. In the process of doing that, I attended and finished a fellowship in osteopathic health policy. And I am on the National Advisory Board of the Osteopathic Health Policy Fellowship, which is coordinated by the American Academy of Colleges of Osteopathic Medicine. I guess the other thing I would want you to know about me is that I'm a lifelong learner. I've had a wonderful variety of experiences through my life because I have taken the opportunity, chosen to take the opportunity to jump in and do a number and variety of things that is why I want to be on the city council. It appeals to me as an opportunity to learn what is unique and special about Canby, what are the challenges that go with Canby? And I probably at least to some degree want to do this because I can still remember being seven years old and watching my father being sworn in as a member of the Canby City Council. And I guess there's always a little part of every man that says I want to be like my dad, even though that's a fairly old memory, so.
Well, great, thank you. What do you think are the most pressing concerns in the city of Canby today?
Two concerns that, one is going to be a concern always and probably always should be a concern and that has to do with budgeting. We all know that providing the services that we currently have and providing additional services as those needs come up, the cost of those are probably going to go up faster than our ability to secure revenue to make those things happen. And even if we had plenty of revenue, I still think it's important that every budgeting process for a government be as tight as possible. The money that we're going to spend is money that one of our citizens didn't have for housing or healthcare or transportation. And we need to make sure that we're spending every one of those dollars really wisely. So budgeting should always be a concern. I think it's probably the hardest thing the city council should do every time it has to do it because it's the way that we take what we say we're going to do and make sure that we really do it. My other pressing concern is related to the tolling on I-5 and the impact that that's going to have on Canby and 90-90 in particular. Obviously, if you had to, if you were out today on 90-90 and tried to get from east to west, you know that that was a challenge and if some of the numbers that we see from ODOT are realistic, traffic is going to be a challenge through the city of Canby. But it's probably more than just the city of Canby. It really is 90-90 from the I-205 exchange in Oregon City to Aurora. Our citizens either live here and maybe need to commute out or don't live here and need to commute in. Our employers are going to count on 90-90 and its ability to continue to move their workforce is important. Our manufacturing base, our agriculture base needs to have good traffic flow to get materials in and their products out. So I think that's probably the biggest concern that I would have looking at the next, you know, kind of five, five-year timeframe for Canby. The question also asks what do I think are some ways we should address this concern? And the best way is the group of people that we have that are currently working on our transportation plan and our transportation committee. And I think we need to, as a city, make sure that they have all of the resources that they need, make sure we get the best community volunteers that we can to serve and help with that process, give them everything we can to support and try to encourage that group to be as creative as possible in looking at what are things that we can do as opposed to perhaps spending time worrying about things we cannot control. I would suppose a traffic commission is probably not one that gets a lot of creatives, probably gets a lot of analyticals. And I would hope maybe we encourage through some method that we get some creatives in there to help us really brainstorm. What are the things that we can do to try to mitigate impact on South 13th and territorial and even streets like South Second? You know, as people try to avoid 90-90, that's, that road's too small and too narrow now. And if people are running that from Safeway to Ivy, we're going to have a lot of issues. So that would be my biggest concern, I think, at this time.
So Mr. Tate, going back to your answer regarding the budgeting aspect, what do you think are the necessary services that cities should provide?
Well, I think we, all of the, all of the basic infrastructure services obviously are ones that we need to provide. So the roads, the water, and I know we've got the Canby Utility Board that we work with, but obviously water and sewer. I think parks are important. I think the library is an important resource in the community. I think all of those are important. And then there are the parts of the budget that people might want to say are not necessarily important, but they are, like finance and those kinds of things. So I think, you know, I think we cover most of the basics and I don't think we cover a lot of extra services that are not important.
So how do you, how do we provide those services?
How do we?
Yeah, I mean, if we're looking at the budgeting coming up and the future growth of the city, how do we, how do we meet the budget implications in those?
Well, I think you've just got to, as much as possible, work with the staff to try to make sure that we're looking at every line item and making sure that every line item is consistent with what we're trying to accomplish as a city. You know, it's no different than working in a not-for-profit or maybe even a for-profit business. It's very difficult to just take a big ax and swing through a budget. You've got to go through and you've got to look at it line by line. And quite frankly, I think it really depends on, the leadership staff gets from the start in putting together the initial draft that comes to us and then our ability to say, okay, if we needed to make some changes here, where do we find that change? Where would we find those, those, those small changes? Because I don't, I don't think it's a, it's a matter of taking an ax or a brute force to it.
No, there are times where we feel that way though, where we want to do that, but it doesn't work. Any other follow-up questions on question two? Question three, do you have some specific goal or improvement you'd like to make in Canby as a result of serving on the city council?
Yes, although I would have to say that to a certain degree, this is a challenging question because I don't have a lot of big concerns about the city of Canby. In the time that I have been here, as I've interacted with city staff, I find them friendly, I find them knowledgeable, I find them helpful, responsive. I think they really do a good job. I don't know that we have huge gaping concerns that really need a lot of improvement. Having said that, I can't let that answer like just lay that way. I would say the number one goal or improvement that I would have as a member of the city council would be related to the completion of the cultivating Canby plan and then its implementation. Parts of that we know will be implemented because the state will mandate them, the expansion of the urban renewal district and some of those kinds of things. But a lot of what is involved in that plan is going to be dependent on our ability to hold ourselves accountable, to either do the things that are in there or at least be honest enough to say, we would like to do them, but these are the unanticipated consequences that have come forward that are just not going to allow us to do that. This is how we'd like to change that, this is, you know, because no plan is going to survive implementation. But I think we need to be as committed as possible to making as much of that plan happen because you cannot involve hundreds, maybe up to 1,000 people in town in the process of putting together that plan and then ignore it. That's, that's just unacceptable. We have to make sure that we commit ourselves to implementing that plan to the best of our ability. And the hardest challenge of that, of course, is that that goes from city council to city council to city council and the makeup of that city council changes. And there will be people that will come onto the city council that were not involved in that process. And we have to remind everybody that all of the citizens that put input into that expected the city council to make sure those things happened, not just the city council that was in place when it was approved.
Great, thank you. It's funny to say this, but a new segment of our interview process is that we, each counselor has a question of their own that they've come up with that they will ask each of the candidates. So you get to be the first one to get a crack at these, Mr. Tate. Counselor Patton, would you like to start us off with your question, sir?
Sure. And your last answer actually lends itself pretty squarely into my question. What can you tell me about some of the projects the city is currently working on, including but not limited to the comprehensive plan update and urban growth boundary expansion?
What can I tell you about them?
Yes, like what, and my assumption is that you've done some research or preparation for this. I'd like to know sort of what you know about where we stand in those processes. Any thoughts or feelings if you've had, if you participated in the meetings, how up to speed you are on that? Because the comprehensive plan leading into this is going to be one of the key things that the city council is going to be working on over the course of the next year. So that's why that's, I am asking this question.
Okay, yes. When I lived in California, I was appointed by county supervisors to be on a community update plan for the unincorporated part of Los Alamos, which is an unincorporated city in Santa Barbara County. So I've been through that process before. So when we started the cultivating Canby process, I signed up to get involved with that. I've been at the two meetings that they have held and participated in those projects. I've had a chance to talk briefly with some of the staff as well as the consultants that have been hired and brought into that. When I went through that process, it was 2005, 2006. Obviously, the world is a little bit different and Canby is a big town compared to the 1,200 people that lived in Los Alamos when we were doing that. However, it's the same process. So I went through the whole mapping exercise that they had. It was enjoyable. One of the Monocucco boys was part of our group. I know his aunt who went to school with me. We had a chance to talk and talk about farmland and talk about the difference between, how do we, how do we keep farmland, which kind of is a vague, you know, we'd like to keep all the farmland we can. Well, we're not going to be able to do all of that. So how do we look at what those land, at different, different values of the farming land that we have and which ones make most sense to be, you know, used for different things, so.
That's it for me.
Okay, any other follow-up questions on that one? No, all right. Go on to the next question and that's Council President Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What is your knowledge, Mr. Tate, and your understanding of the urban renewal? And second part of that is do you support the closure of Canby's urban renewal district?
I have a, I guess, a working knowledge of urban renewal and what it's trying to accomplish. I think it is a redirection of tax revenue in order to support specific projects. I'm not 100% certain that I have a strong opinion one way or the other about our urban renewal, other than the fact that I would really have preferred that there was a separate urban renewal committee as opposed to the city council doing that specifically on its own. And that's not to say that there's any, I don't have a specific, you know, because of that, this or that happened. But I just think that the more chances we give public input, the more chances we have to have people that serve on those kinds of commissions, the stronger that that makes the city as a whole, so.
Yes, Counselor Patton.
I just wanted, just for clarification sake, up until about 2007, I think, there was actually an urban renewal advisory board.
Okay.
That was part, that was similar to like the Budget Committee and the Parks Committee and such. That was actually the first group I ever joined when I first moved here to the city of Canby. And at a certain point in time, I guess, it just became a moot point because most of the plan had been enacted in the urban renewal district or they couldn't get enough people to sit on it and then it was disbanded. So just so you know, there was something like that, but I am a fan of community involvement.
Thank you, I did not know that. I appreciate knowing that.
Jason, the oracle of Canby. Any other follow-up questions for Mr. Tate regarding urban renewal? None, okay. Our next question comes from Counselor Davis.
Thank you and thanks for coming, thanks for applying.
Thank you.
The, the city has a strategic plan or goals that we set every year. I don't know if you've had a chance to review those goals, but please tell us about the top three projects in which the city is currently working on and how would your background help move these projects forward?
Top three projects that the city is currently working on? The renewal update on Legacy Park and some of the issues that related to that. I think I've heard at the last couple of city council meetings, there's been some issues there. I think that's a very important project. I guess I would just have to be honest enough to say I'm not sure that I know of two other projects that the city's working on that I could answer that question with.
Thanks, David. Last question, I think, is what, or sorry, is from Counselor Maldonado. Almost took your question, sir.
You know, and thank you again for coming.
Thank you.
So what, if anything, do you feel that the city itself is lacking, whether it be within the council or any other committee? What do you, what do you feel the city of Canby is actually lacking?
If I had a magic wand and budget was not an issue and I could make it happen, I would really like the city to have a business hub, I guess is something that I would call it, a place where those people that either choose to or don't have the option of working from home and don't really like doing that or are not necessarily good at it or occasionally need to have an office and a place to go, that we would have a resource that was available for them to rent space, whether they needed conference room space or whether they just needed better Zoom facilities or something like that. I, the job that I had with the Northwest Osteopathic Medical Foundation covered five states. My board president is in Billings, my vice president is in Fairbanks, my treasurer is in Anchorage, and I have therefore become an expert in Zoom long before all of us had to do it. I hate working from home, I'm not good at it. And a lot of people just don't have the space to dedicate to do that kind of thing. And so having that kind of a facility, something like that, that I could use either full-time or at least on a part-time basis when I had important meetings and I didn't need the dog jumping on me or whatever, you know, was involved, I think that kind of a facility would be really, really good for Canby. And so if I could make one magic thing happen, that's what I would do.
Yes, Counselor Patton.
As a follow-up to that, would you envision a facility like that being something that is owned and operated by the city or something that the city would work with private industry to bring into the city?
Yeah, no, it would be private industry. But I think the city would need to be helpful in making that happen because I think it would be part of that economic development portion of Canby.
Okay. And I guess I get the last question and that is, what questions do you have for us?
This may be a tad forward, but does Councilman Stern get to ask a question or did he just opt out?
Well, I don't, I do not, sorry, thank you. Did you have a question?
I do, I apologize for not getting it ahead of time.
Okay. My fault, excuse me.
Yeah, it's not on the sheet.
It's not on there, so it's a mystery knowing.
None of us know.
As long as the same question is asked of all the candidates, that's fair.
Yeah, okay. So it's just as a background for the question, it's been my experience often that a lot of the citizens of any jurisdiction, Canby or Oregon or US, the workings of, inner workings of a government are somewhat of a mystery and it's often the perception is that the, it is inaccessible to ordinary citizens. How would you, what would you, how would you make Canby, the mysteries and the, of the city of Canby more accessible to people who may not be dedicated to this operation full-time?
Sure. In 2004, I was elected to the Los Alamos Community Service District Board. It was a water, sewer, parks district and again in this small, unincorporated community. And I would not have even considered doing that except for one of my friends in town came up to me and said, you need to do this. And it's like, what do they do? And he gave me a little example of it and he says, you need to do that. This is going to sound like terrible sucking up, but I'm going to go ahead and do it anyway. The comment that you made a couple of city council meetings ago about the city of Canby 101 or city of Canby University kind of thing, an opportunity for citizens to come in and learn about the city, I think would be a great idea. I think it would help, one of the things that President Hensley was talking about when we were talking about the ethics training and you started brainstorming and it's like, oh, well, we could invite these people in, we could invite these people. And that's true, you could, but that's almost like inviting people to a master's level class where what they, what we really need is an entry-level class on, this is basic city government, this is basically how it works, these are our commissions, these are the things we do. The second benefit of that, which you did not mention, but I think is equally as important, is that then becomes a proving ground or a testing ground or a recruiting place for finding more people so that we don't have to close a commission because we just don't have enough volunteers. If we put 20 or 30 citizens through this university, city of Canby 101, then we would be able to, as a group, we, the big we, encourage them and say, you know, you've got a lot of interest in traffic. You, you know, you should consider, we've got an opening there, you should consider doing that. Because I know from all the years that I worked in the Boy Scouts, people would tell us over and over, the number one problem that a Cub Scout pack has or any volunteer group has is we don't have enough volunteers. And we ask for volunteers all the time. And yet when we would go out and survey parents, they would say, well, I was never, I was never a leader because nobody ever asked me. It's a significant difference between standing in front of a group of people and saying, we would like you to volunteer, we've got all these things are really special, is much different than, Jim, we got this job in the city of Canby and I think you would do a really good job with that. And so I think that university gives us a place to do that. So, sorry, that was completely sucking up, but I happen to know you said that, so.
Also, I notice you have a math background, so I thought you would explain, you know, first order, ordinary differential equations for us, just for fun, but we'll skip on that.
My, my math background is old enough, I learned computer science with punch cards, so.
Any other follow-up questions from Mr. Stern's question? No? I guess I'll go back to my last question, any questions for us?
Sorry, I did not mean to be so forward.
No, you're not forward at all.
No, I, I don't have a lot of questions for you. That's one of the reasons why, back in October, when I made the decision to retire, and I told my board I was going to do it and hold them to it, I made the decision that, since I had the ability in the time, I wanted to come start watching the city council, and the city council meetings. Because it's more than just being a city council person, it's being part of a group. None of you accomplish anything by yourself. It's your ability to work together, it's your ability to use each other's strengths and work through your differences in order to try to find the, the best solution for the city of Canby. I, I apologize, but I don't, I don't have a question. Thank you.
All right, well, perfect. Well, thank you. We appreciate you coming and applying and being here this evening. You're more than welcome to hang here in the auditorium while we interview everybody else, and we'll be, once those are completed, we'll be making, we'll be having a discussion and decision this evening on, on that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess our next interviewee is, interviewee is Eric Van Zandt. Do you grab any one of those ones, please? Thank you. You got water? You grab me one, please? Thank you. Mr. Van Zandt, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
How are you?
Good. Yourself, Councilman?
Good. Not too shabby.
Good evening.
Well, thank you for applying and then being here this evening to be a part of this process. We have a couple of, I guess, preloaded questions, which I think were sent to you in advance, yes?
Correct.
And then we have a couple of follow-up individual questions here from the council that we will ask and judge your nimbleness on, on our questions.
That's good. I'm not very flexible, but I'm, we'll see what we can do here.
All right. Quick feet, quick feet are okay.
All right.
So, first question, Mr. Van Zandt, can you tell us a little bit about yourself, and what appeals to you about serving on the Canby City Council?
All righty. First of all, thank you for being here this evening. And I want to say, I don't think I'm going to be able to follow that first guy. He's a pretty tough show, so. Well, first of all, I am a resident of Canby. I've lived here since 1976. When I came here in second grade with my parents, my mom and dad, I'm an only child. And graduated high school in 89. Back in 88, my junior year of school here, I got connected to, with Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and was an explorer with three of my buddies in high school. And continued that program until I went into turn 21. In the evening I turned 21, I got sworn in to the reserve program, and I was a reserve deputy and spent nine years total at the sheriff's office, Clackamas County. I've been pretty busy with EMS since that time. I was a volunteer firefighter with here in Canby Fire District. Spent nine years there, was lucky enough to work my ways up from firefighter to AO, driving the fire apparatus. Started off as an EMT, and right now I've spent 18 and a half years with American Medical Response and did 911 EMS for Clackamas County. Sadly, I had to medically retire in 2001. I'm normally a pretty shy individual and pretty quiet, but I'm going to, full disclosure, which I don't want this to be taken or impacted anyway. I have stage five kidney failure, and I am trying to prove to my buddies that, I've always joked with them since high school, that one of these days I'm going to run for city council. So, here I am. So, I'm trying to fulfill quite a few things in my unknown length of time here. So, I've got good news with my doctor's appointments. So everything's staying online, so that's good. But I've also, during that time, spent 10 years with Mountain Wave Search and Rescue. So I'm an active communications person with them. I do radio, ham communications. I also do the four-by-four team with them. I am not a ground pounder, sorry to say, so I don't do ground searches. And then I've been lucky enough to start back up with the fire department here in town with their emergency ham communications program and their SIR program. So I'm privileged to do that. I'm also, in my free time, studying for my emergency management degree. So I thought I'd add one more thing to my list here and try counsel. I'm pretty good at sidestepping and dancing, so I figured I'd give it a shot.
You will find that many of us up here, it's just, you know, what's one more thing?
Just one more thing. It's all good. It's all good.
Well, perfect.
Yeah. And I am also on the Traffic Safety Committee here in town. I've been on that for the last couple of years, and taking the initiative to start up a couple programs possibly that's in progress. I'll advise you later on that, so that's all, all in due time. Oh, okay. So, unless someone else is going to have the fireworks.
There you go. So, Mr. Van Zandt, what do you think are the most pressing concerns in the city of Canby today?
Right now, the two concerns that I see are transportation and infrastructure. Breaking the, let me rephrase that, 205 issue, the tolling on 205, and then the city streets as a result of the increased traffic that's going to be on those. Sadly, the narrow residential streets that we have right now, I don't think will become good thoroughfares for the city in the next couple of years. There's nothing we can do about them. I mean, the city's already developed what they are. So we definitely need a plan in the future for stuff like that. Both full aspects of it, bike, pedestrian, dog walkers, stuff like that, and then transportation safely getting around town, which means also an education program to people to make sure that their behavior slows down and treat each other with respect and safety.
So in terms of just the transfer, you're kind of breaking out the 205 piece in Canby city streets as your two?
Yeah, the two, okay. Two primary.
What do you think are some ways to address those concerns?
Well, public education first and foremost. Direct communication with the citizens, because those are the folks that we work with, work for. So it's important to have direct communications with them. Be frank with them, be honest with them, listen to their input, and try to work to the best of what you can. You're not going to be able to solve everyone's problems, but you can definitely hear everyone's problems and work as a team with your fellow colleagues to hopefully maybe one day address them.
Any follow-up questions?
No.
Okay. Do you have some specific goal or improvement you would like to make in Canby as a result of serving on the city council?
I tried to give that some thought, and I did a little homework, but the first thing that comes to my mind is that, if given this opportunity, I would like to get to know the citizens more. And that's one thing I haven't, I've watched a lot of the tapes, the previous recordings of the council meetings. But I'd like to, if given a position, have open house and sit down and be available here on Tuesdays. Eight, you know, eight to noon, noon to four. Come on in, have a cup of coffee with me, or some tea, water, whatever your drink of choice is. Not alcoholic. And, you know, talk and listen and see what's going on. And then obviously, luckily, with all the meetings that everyone goes to and the council would go to as a group, I get to know more folks and get to listen to their inputs. And I've heard about going to the store, it could be like a three-hour chore.
Yeah, yes.
I've heard that, so I look possibly forward to that. I don't think I've ever spent three hours in a store, but anyway, that's a side point. So yeah, that, and then I want to work on the transportation aspect. The future of it, not where we're at now, because unfortunately, we are where we are. But I think with the future of it, there's infrastructure that needs to be developed that if pieces of equipment get added to it down the road, that needs to be pre-planned for. And I would like possibly different intersections to have its fullest capabilities of options that's available for intersections relating to traffic safety. So I want that kind of planned for, you know, look forward to that. But then I also want to work on the goals that's already established. And then whatever the citizens tell me, you know? Bottom line is, I've got to listen to what they say and try to meet their needs. Someone's about to sniffles.
Sneezed my brains out. What's left?
Okay. It's okay, I'm getting a little itch too, so it's all good.
So we'll move into just questions that each of the councilors have wanted to ask. We'll start with Councilor Patten.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So you had said that you had watched some of the past city council meetings. My question is to test your knowledge on your planning and preparation for this. So, as you know, the city of, as you probably know, the city of Canby is in, currently in the process of updating its comprehensive plan, which will lead into an urban growth boundary expansion.
Heard about that.
I am curious as to what you can tell me about where we are in that process, kind of what we have done so far. Have you been involved in any of the meetings or anything like that? What, what is your knowledge of that plan?
Oh, boy. So, what I have knowledge of is that there is the Urban Renewal meeting greater goal. Terminology slacks for me right now. I've had instant brain fart.
It's fine.
The planning session is already under, under works with Dawn. And that meeting, there's another meeting scheduled here shortly, I think, at Baker Prairie. That's coming up. I have not been involved in any of those meetings up till now. I've been shy, believe that. So I have not participated in any. I've wanted to. And I was actually thinking about doing some more homework on that before this venture came up, so I haven't done a lot of research on it. I know it's going to be a huge impact, but I can't give you a really specific answer right now because there's so many pieces of the puzzle that's not developed.
Sure.
And it's, I'm not trying to beat the subject here.
You're fine.
Be shy around it. Because if I was to sit here and give you an answer hard and firm, then I kind of would be defeating the purpose of coming up here with an open mind and trying to learn more and, you know, get a equal fairing of it, hearing both sides of the corner.
Okay.
Obviously, it's going to impact the city a great deal. It has many reaching, many different reaching aspects. Budgeting, fees for the city, street maintenance fee is going to be one issue. Obviously, the transportation, which has into primary and secondary routes. That's the best answer I can give right now with the limited resources that I have.
That's fine. Thank you.
Great. Any other follow-up at all? No? Council President Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Van Zandt, what is your knowledge and understanding of urban renewal? And do you support the closure of Canby's Urban Renewal District?
So, kind of leaning towards the same answer here. I haven't done a lot of research on that. I got to admit, I honestly haven't done a lot of research on the, on the subjects. One, because I wanted to see what information you guys had, what your information packets are, to be better informed. I don't like making decisions half-heartedly. I have learned the hard way about making answers without knowing the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey said. So, I honestly don't know upfront with that. And to give you a hard answer, I can't. I honestly can't.
Kind of piggyback on that, then. Are you aware of any projects in town that you could say, oh, that was an urban renewal project? Are you even aware of, of what the Urban Re, like, Urban Renewal Agency has done?
Yeah, I've, I've heard. Of course, I, I heard the, the initial when the urban growth boundary first started. I heard the big flare-ups about it, the pros and cons. That was way back when, and honestly, I've had so much personal stuff and life stuff to go on to where I can't remember some of the war stories. But I remember the heat about it. And so I obviously knew there was a conflict, but just like with everything else, it's settled down. I haven't heard that much conflict about it. I know, obviously, it's in, in progress, so, and continuously changing. So I can't put my finger on it right now.
Okay. Thank you.
And I apologize for that.
No, it's all right.
Thank you.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, and thanks for applying. Reminded us of your.
Don't mind at all. Thank you, sir. And the only problem with that, though, is you better let everyone else know about that.
No, that's all right.
Okay.
Maybe after the fact.
After the fact.
Yeah. So, Eric, the city has a, sets goals and objectives every year. Have you had a chance to review those at all?
Some of them, not, not too many. Like I said, I tried not to go up, I tried not to do a lot of homework before I showed up here.
Okay, that's fine. And so based upon the goals and objectives, the ones you've looked at, what would be your top three goals and objectives out of that? what would be your top three goals and objectives out of that?
I guess speaking as, as a citizen, as a citizen Cambie, how I, how I look at it would be making sure the budget's balanced, making sure that we have a reserve, the money's being spent properly, and that I answer and I can be accountable for the actions that I took. So I think those would be the three.
Okay. Thank you.
Any follow up questions on councillor Davis's question? No? Okay. Councillor Maldonado.
So first foremost, I'll say, when I keep you in my prayers, I actually survived kidney failure in 2007, so I definitely know what you're going through.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm glad you're well.
Absolutely. Thank you. So what if anything do you feel the city as a whole is lacking, whether it be within this council, whether it be within any committee? What do you feel is lacking within the city of Cambie?
I guess I, from what I've seen, is there's, there's growth that's coming into the city. And I know the city wants to keep, it's in the charter and one of the values to keep the small town feel of Cambie. I want to keep that, I want to keep that feeling so bad. I really do. I remember when there was fields all around this place and I used to play in them. And now that's still buildings and concrete. But I guess that's the challenge is, is meeting both of them effectively and keeping a, keeping a real fair, fair balance. Cause I know the, the population while Cambie is, is young, middle-aged folks, young families, and they work in Portland or Salem area. There's a lot of the older folks that live here that want to keep that small feeling. And it's hard to, it's hard to keep that small town feeling when you have not so much speeding down the old secondary roads, but just the increased traffic that goes down those roads. So the perception of, well, we have a speeding problem here. No, we've just got 75 more cars than what used to be the three cars ago that went down the street. And so that's the, that's the balance. Cause I would love nothing more to get back on my bike and be able to ride across town and not have to worry about it. But now it's it's 50/50.
Any other follow up pieces? Councillor Sterns.
Okay. As a little background for my question, a lot of people in various government view government as a sort of a mystery. People in government out of touch and a lot of this is because people don't understand how it works. And so my question is on how would you be able to increase the understanding and opportunities for citizens to be able to understand and be able to, to connect with the city?
Well, pretty much I just continue with what I've done. I've been a servant since my junior year in high school. So I just, like I said earlier, I just pull up a chair in here and say, here I am, or go over to the third way and, and meet the folks for coffee and, and just get out and make face-to-face contact with people and talk to them. Just talk, have a normal conversation. You know, say, you know, let's talk frank, you know? Be honest with each other. That's what people are looking for. At least that's what I'm looking for is be honest. If you can be honest with someone, then you know, they'll have an understanding. Like I said earlier, you're not going to be able to win over everybody. But if you could even just slightly drift someone over to saying, hey, you know, I understand that he's got to file three different paperworks. And it's got to go, you know, month after month, month after month to get, you know, checked or answered or rebuttled, followed up on, come back to, and then I've got to track down the person. So it may take time. And then, well, I was looking for an immediate response. Got to work with me here. You know, if I can get you one, I will. If I got your number, I'll call you right away. If it takes me a month, you got to cut me some slack, but at least I'll tell you upfront. So public education is, I think, a really big key in my book is getting out and just talking with people. So believe it or not, I am a shy person, but I do like to talk every once in a while.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any follow up on that? And I get the last question, Mr. Van Zant, and it's a tough one. Do you have any questions for us?
Yes.
Shoot.
I forgot. Okay. Actually, no, I do not. I, I just, I appreciate your time and effort and thank you for giving me this opportunity. Thanks for being gentle with me at the same time. So and I'll say that. I'm done.
Well, thank you. You're welcome to stay here in the, in the auditorium and watch the next couple of candidates as we do their interview and then when we're done with them.
You don't have to. You're welcome to. You can.
No, there's a lot of great competition here. I got to give you that. I'd love to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jason Anderson.
Oh. There you go. Sometimes I get screwed down tight. Oh no, I'm all good, but thank you.
Just waiting for orders. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good. How you doing, Mayor?
Not too bad, sir. Well, thank you for applying and for being here this evening.
Thank you for allowing me.
Yeah. So we have a couple of questions that you were emailed correctly. Did you get an opportunity to see those?
That is correct. Yep.
Perfect. The second part of the question and answer will be individual questions from each of the councillors and myself for you to just kind of answer. And a lot of that's just to kind of see what you, what homework you've done as well as how nimble you may or may not be on your feet here. And then, yeah, so we'll run through those in, in good order. So
Perfect.
The first question, Mr. Anderson, is please tell us a little about, a little bit about yourself and what is it that appeals to you about being on the city council?
Okay. A little bit about me is I actually grew up the first 28 years of my life in Beaverton and then moved to Cambie back in about 2003, 2004. So I've been here for the last 21 years. I would now consider I'm not quite 50% of my life here in town, but I'm close enough. I could consider myself being from Cambie. I basically raised my children in Cambie through different activities, through the school district on up. A lot of the time since I've been here, because obviously I did not grow up in this town, there's a lot of people that have. They've spent their entire lives here. Once I moved to town, I've spent the majority of my time sort of sitting in the audience, kind of watching the show, so to speak. I've been here for 20 years. I've kind of seen some of the ups and downs of what's gone on in the town. I've kind of been here to see at least enough time go by where there's been enough change that I've been able to witness in the 20 years that I've been here. There's things that I find super appealing about it and there's things that now that, again, as I've matured a little bit too, now that I'm in my 48th year on this planet, you start to look at things a little bit differently. And you start to say like, huh, I'm questioning these things a little bit differently, or I'm curious about these things compared to when you're in your mid twenties, you're just cruising along, life is great. What could there possibly be a problem? During that time, throughout my life, I've done volunteer service in one way or another. Typically the volunteer service that I provided has been people have come to me and said, hey, you have this skillset because of my job or something like that and said, we could really use you. Would you mind doing this? Absolutely. I'd love helping out a community. One of the examples I would give is, and I'll just get into my career first and I'll talk a little bit more about volunteer service. As you may have read my application, I'm a, basically been in the fire service now 30 years. I'm currently working for the city of Portland at Portland Fire and Rescue and I am the supervising investigator of their arson unit. And I'm also a canine handler, which is kind of the coolest thing, having your own dog go to work with you every day. In that particular role, being in the public service and first responder role, I've worked as a paramedic, I've worked as a firefighter and a law enforcement officer. So someday I'll figure out what I want to do when I grow up. This might be one of those things that I'm dabbling into a little bit. But in that time, it's developed a lot of skillset for me that again, like I said, leading to volunteerism. You know, for a period of time I volunteered with Cambie Fire District, but Cambie Fire District has an established district. They didn't, my skillset as a professional firefighter wasn't necessarily something that was lacking, so to speak. So I volunteered like for the Hubbard Fire District for five and a half years where that skillset could be there with the new recruits that were volunteering and that seemed to be something more of value. So those are the things that I've drifted for when people have wanted me to volunteer is I look for those things that it's something that I feel that at the end of the day, when I'm spending my time, I wanted to know that it meant something for somebody rather than just kind of just being, you know, one of the, one of the mass numbers of other people that can do that type of thing. In my job, doing what I do, you have to maintain a level of ethics and leadership in what I do. And that is something that I've carried on in my personal life. I do not, you know, I carry myself in a way that I'm proud about the things that I do. I'm proud about the job I do. There is nothing that I like to do that would call anything into question because I know anything in my personal life is transparent and then reflect on my personal, my professional life as well. So that's something I'm very accustomed to when it comes to being in that type of fashion. Ultimately, when you're talking about what do I want to do about serving as a city council, which is the second part of that question, I hinted about it a little bit before is I've sat now for the last several years and I've watched what has gone on in Cambie, both with the city council, both with a lot of social media stuff. You see the media. I found myself sitting and questioning things and going, why on earth are we doing this? What, this doesn't make sense to me. I don't understand. And when I start to get to that point in my life and a sudden, again, I'm going to go back to my leadership role, I believe at that point, and has anybody here heard the man in the arena speech at all with Teddy Roosevelt? Councillor Maldonado, okay. That's posted on my wall at work and there's a reason for that. When you get into a leadership role and the role that you all are doing as council members, it's easy for me to sit in the background and question it. It's those that step into the role that actually know what it's like to be in that role and can experience all of the things that you're experiencing in your role, which is why you're making the decisions you're making. I can sit here, I can ask questions. That's great. But until you step into the arena and you have that responsibility and you have that knowledge and the exposure to the things that people don't necessarily get exposed to, that's where it matters. And so an opportunity like I'm sitting here right now does not happen often. In order to become a city council member, most of the time you have to go through the elections process. And I'll be frank, my name's not cuts forth, it's not polls to wait. I'm Anderson with an E N. There is not very many of me in this town, but still none of you probably know me very well. So, and I've been here 20 years. So when it comes to that, when I see an opportunity like this with my personality, I say, okay, I can sit and I can criticize or I can jump in the arena with two feet and, and really get sort of an opportunity to see something that most people don't get the opportunity to see in their lifetime. And that could turn into a long-term process or it could remain short-term and say, not for me. I have no idea. And that's something that we can get into a little bit later on, different questions if you want. But that's a little bit about me in a nutshell.
No, appreciate that very much. Not typical, but you brought up about being more curious and maybe some things that have caused you to kind of scratch your head and kind of go, hmm, I wonder. What have some of those things been?
So the big, and I think it seems to be kind of a hot button topic of a lot of things that are going, well, there's a couple of different hot button topics. One, it's, it's sort of like the growth of the city and what are we doing as a community? When you look at the, when you look at documents, basically I think it's the, it's the goals of the, what the city council's goals are and it's to keep the small town feel while we're growing, right? You look at different things and you see how money's being spent throughout the city. And as a community member, you see how it's being spent. You're wondering, is this the best thing we could have done at this? Well, now the reality is I don't know if this was grant funding. I don't know if this was funding that got received by ODA. The research in order to find some of this, but as a community member as a whole driving around town, you do this. There's other things that happen. For instance, I know it's a hot button topic going on right now because it was fun kind of watching some of the city council agenda stuff and trying to do a little bit of research to really kind of figure it out. But like traffic in this town is a hot button topic right now. And I was watching the last council session and you were talking about the housing developed down by the PD. And you're talking about lowering that down to 20 miles an hour. And for me, I was, I was sitting watching. I was like, I have so many questions right now. Like, and, and part of who I am as an individual is I'm that annoying person that asks why. That's why I've always been. I'm the why guy. Like, why are we doing this? What are we doing? I mean, you got, you got to sell me on it. Why is making that place 20 miles an hour going to solve any problems? What is the root cause for the issue? We can lower it to 20 miles an hour. We can do that. I had so many questions watching that, that it's like, I felt like I needed to be sitting here to ask those questions and do that, but really kind of be part of that decision-making process because again, what's, what's the next, when you make that decision to do that, what other seven neighborhoods are going to want that next? What is the root cause of that? Being a police officer, doing traffic enforcement and working and in my application, you saw I worked in the city of Aurora. You want to talk about a reputation for a police department for that town for a long period of time. When I worked there, my whole goal where they brought me in was my skillset was to not write speeding tickets. It was to deal with other issues that were going on. When I took over as the chief of police at the very end, while we were transitioning over, it was the most frequent complaint we got was traffic. Okay. So how do you appeal to people? Dropping the speed limit to 20 doesn't matter. I can sit there in a black and white all day long and they might slow down for that part, but when the black and white's not there, what are they doing? The speed limit sign isn't going to do anything. It's a root cause of why is it important for those members to sit there and drive 20 miles per hour? And when I looked at the gate that's closed, that restricts access for them to enter and leave that complex and it's fire department access only. I think about me and myself. It's like, okay, I've been in that neighborhood plenty of times. Well, when you restrict an egress and ingress coming in and out of that neighborhood, what do people tend to do? You're now making them drive longer to get in and out of that neighborhood. Now they're being forced to go around in front of somebody else's home instead of out the closest access. So that starts to drive the neighborhood upset. So there's a lot of things that again, like I said, I'm a why guy. That's who I am. So when I was watching that, I'm like, I have so many questions. And I drive around town, I see four-way stops going up. And I know that's a hot button topic too, of four-way stops. And I'm like, is this helping or hurting? Are we doing a reevaluation process? Are we not? Or what are we really looking at? Are we making these changes and we're not sure if this was the correct one and we need to undo this change? Those are things that start asking questions and, and this is the body that's responsible for those things. And so again, like I said, if I'm going to step up and do something, I want to be part of something that's going to make the change and be part of that conversation. And that's why I'm here.
Great. Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
Uh huh.
Second question is, what do you think are the most pressing concerns in the city of Cambie today? And what do you think are some of the best ways to address those concerns?
Well, I mean, when you look at Cambie today, I mean, it has changed a lot in 20 years that I've been here and it's going to change a lot in the next 20 years. I think we're on this, sort of this, I want to say it's almost like the, it's an exponential growth rate is what it seems like to me. Especially when you're looking at, and I did a little bit of research. You're going to find out I am not the expert on policy and I don't pretend to be. I don't look at this position as being the person that should be an expert on anything other than to come in and learn and try to do as much as you can for the time that you're here. It's like being a substitute teacher. And, and hopefully it turns into that permanent teaching role. But when I looked at the comprehensive plan for the city and I kind of did a review on it, now it's a long document, 169 pages. I didn't memorize it. But I'm looking through it, it answered some of my questions with the urban growth boundary and things like that. But that's the biggest concern I've seen is we're looking at a lot of the industrial area being developed very rapidly. You know, there's been the hot button topics of Columbia Beverage coming in. Then we've had the talks of the Amazon warehouse coming in. There are towns that have done a really good job of predicting that 30-year model and really supporting the infrastructure and supporting everything that goes along with that. And there's others that it's sort of like, it starts becoming the tail wagging the dog. That's been my biggest concern being a community member is I've noticed the increased traffic problems. And that's why I brought it up earlier. It's a hot button topic. I've noticed the amount of cars on the roadways. I've noticed that, and this kind of goes back to my topic of traffic a little bit, is Birch Street. It has the speed bumps that were installed. And I know you were It has the speed bumps that were installed and I know you were talking about that, Councilor Patton in the last meeting as well. I live on Aspen, one block to the west. I'm a police officer, I would really love to be in the city of Canby as a police officer and just sit in front of my house and tag people doing forty-five trying to get around the speed bumps on Birch. That's a negative effect of that decision to use Birch. So, to put the speed bumps on Birch, people will do forty-five on my street to pass the cars going slow on Birch to then blow the stop sign at the end of the tenth and round over to Birch and get ahead of vehicles. So, it, it's sort of those things that as I, as I look at some of this, it's, it's the rate of growth we're doing and the comprehensive, like I said, I looked through it, I read some of it, it was good, I understood more about the urban growth boundary and what our plan is moving forward. But obviously, there has to be that ability to audible as things are changing and the things that are happening and we have to be conscientious of that. And the biggest thing we want to do is stick with the goal, which is not to lose the small town feel that we have. And that's that fine line right now where there seems to almost be a little bit of like, are we losing that small town feel? A little bit, are we starting to get a little bit too big without maintaining some of that? And again, I, I hit traffic, I can keep going circles on that stuff. Those are two things that I have seen personally as a community member that have me concerned. And then as I've, I've kind of done, it seems to be a hot button topic, it seems to be going around, everybody's coming to the council about it. So, when I look at that, especially when you're dealing with like urban growth, you're dealing with the things that are happening in this town, it falls under that fiscal responsibility that we have as the government. When you talk about fiscal responsibility, it is something that is important in any city government right now. I work for the city of Portland, you want to talk about some interesting stuff being in the audience, being an employee. As a government employee, I see where we waste, I see the things that don't make me happy on what we're doing. And yet, at the same token, I'm losing personnel to do jobs when I know that the spending is being wasted over here, but yet we're losing critical, critical and essential employees over here. Being able to be accountable to the community for that is huge. And I think that that takes a lot of knowledge and a lot of thoughtfulness in order to figure out the best plan because, again, as we're growing, you know, the tax rates can only go up so much per year, we're only getting so much and we're trying to be creative about what other revenue streams can we get? Is it through taxation, is it through, you know, grant funding through other organizations, through other governmental agencies? What is it we need to be able to do to continue to be able to rise while the cost of everything is going exponential through the roof? And right now, every Ameri, every person in Oregon especially is feeling the cost of living. And, you know, as we go to ask and you, and you know, you were talking about the pool and the things we need for the pool that are coming up and there's other things that are happening, it's like, how are we going to make that happen when we're asking people for more, but yet they're, they don't actually have more truly, you know, with what's going on? So I think that creativity, we have to be conscientious of. And the other part, that I think is one of the biggest concerns is trust in government. And I'm not saying this with any disrespect in bid on this council because things have changed quite a bit, but if you Google Canby City Council, it's not glowing raving five-star reviews on a Google review. You see a lot of controversy that has happened. It seems like that is settled and that is something that is great and I'm happy for that. I wouldn't be here if I didn't think that it's settled. But anytime there is controversy with a public official of any kind, that trust is broken. And anytime you break the trust, it takes tenfold the effort to earn that trust back. And that is something that is hard to do. And as I've watched the city council interact with each other over the last year and a half, roughly over the last year, there's been a definite change in what I've seen from the past. That is something that I think is an improvement and I'm happy to try to be part of that as well. But again, there is some trust that's been broken with the community and whoever you instill in this position has to be able to not break that trust anymore.
Thank you. Any other follow-up questions? Do you have some specific goal or improvement you'd like to make in Canby as a result of serving on the Canby City Council?
So I thought about this one long and hard and to be straight honest with you, this, again, I said, this is like a substitute position. Okay, you're allowing somebody to come in here, but there is no guarantee this person's gonna keep their job. There is zero guarantee, you cannot make that guarantee. You're asking somebody to fill in a role for a period of less than one year, you have basically, when the election is in November and you have to be able to be on the ballot and do all that, so you're looking at really, you're giving somebody six months to participate in this particular process to move on. Anybody that steps into an executive role like this, if you're walking in with a preconceived agenda or notion or idea of what you're going to do, you're wrong. Your job is to learn, first and foremost, which you don't know. Your job is to come in and, and represent the community for the job you're supposed to do, but you have a lot to learn, there is a lot of uptake that's gonna happen. And especially in a very quick amount of time, it's gonna be drinking from a fire hose. And I get to say that because I'm a fireman too, so. But if I came in here and said, my plan is to do this, I'd be wrong. My plan is to come in and learn and be open-minded, learn from everybody that has experience, no matter how short, no matter how long, that's the goal, is to learn what I don't know because at least I'm old enough now where I can say, man, I don't even know what I don't even know. And, and that's okay, you know, when you're younger, you're like, I got a twelve-year-old son at home, oh, he knows it all right now. And I'm dealing with that fun stuff and it's like, the other day when he missed the bus, it was like, it was like you walking all the way from the Northwest Townside to Baker Prairie, well, can you come home and drive me? You wouldn't learn something very important today. So, again, he thought he knew everything, well, he got humbled out that day. I personally believe that my goal coming in is to learn from the experience that's here, learn from the community, listen and not do this, which I'm good at doing this, as you can tell right now. But you need to learn to do this and hear what people are telling you and really understand what's going on and then participate as that experience starts increasing and that's the time where you think. Or if you're talking about something that goes in my realm, absolutely, I'm happy to give you some of my knowledge and opinion and experience, but again, that's kind of where I see the goals would be is to learn this role and truly, you're learning me, if you, if you accept me in here, we're all getting to know each other in a period of time. And it's sort of like the baby learning how to walk and crawl. That first ninety days, you should really be trying to figure out sort of like, what is this all about, what am I doing? Yet in that sixty, second ninety days, you're starting to crawl a little bit more, you're feeling a little bit more comfortable. What would this, this little gift that's been given is, by the time you hit about that six-month mark, you need to have that decision made. And you would hope that the feedback from the council would let you know if this is an appropriate place for you to be. And at that point, you make that decision, okay. I think this is a great fit for everybody, let's keep moving forward and let's get prepared for an election and let's start ramping up for it and moving forward. Or you start to say, you know what, city council respectfully, it's been six months, it looks like we ain't all jiving, you ain't jiving with me, we're not working well together, this is not for me. I suggest we start figuring out who that next plan might be or, or start trying to really let the public know that, hey, everybody step up and we need to fill this vacancy. So I have no false expectations or hopes that like, if appointed, congratulations, welcome the next five years, it's, you gotta get over that first year first. And that's gonna be, that's gonna be that, that learning curve.
Thank you. Any follow-up at all from the council? Okay, your first council question is from Councilor Patton.
So actually, I do have just one thing to say about your last statement. I respect much of what you said and that whole thing, but I will just preface this. It is great to hear what the, what your fellow counselors have to say as to whether you are fit or not for this position. But ultimately, we answer to the community. And if the community tells you, you should be here and you and your heart tell you, you should be here, it should not matter one bit what anybody up here tells you. So I'll just say that, okay.
Can I add to my last really quick?
Sure.
So, hundred percent agree. I guess the best way to clarify that when I say to seek if there's a fit is, as a leader, I look for people that disagree with me all the time and I want them by my side. How many people have seen the Blue Bloods TV show? Anybody?
Which one?
Blue Bloods?
Yes.
Okay, you want to talk about a good leadership show, you watch that show. He puts people that are next to him that disagree with him, that maybe have a different opinion. To me, that's perfect.
Yeah.
That's what I mean by fit, if there's three of us that are all identical in the way that we think all the time and we're just in such harmony, am I really making that much of a difference? Or is it better to have somebody that can challenge respectfully and have a difference of opinion or a different mindset? So that's kind of what I meant by that.
Yeah, no, I just, it was something that stuck out and I just wanted to.
No, I appreciate it, I do appreciate it.
So my question is, clearly you've done some research coming into tonight.
Little bit, not a lot of time.
So, one of the things that came, so the question is, what can you tell me about some of the projects the city is currently working on? And specifically, the city is working on its comprehensive plan, which will lend itself into urban growth boundary expansion. I'm curious as to what, if any, research you've done on that. What do you know of what's been done towards the process, what's coming of the process and have you been to any of the community meetings or anything like that?
My participation, my participation has been nil other than sitting here tonight.
Okay.
The, over the last, I'm gonna say about six and a half months is when I would start to review the city council meetings and start to not be present in person, it's easier for me to watch it via the YouTube while I'm kind of multitasking because that's what I do best is like have twelve things going all at once and kind of sort of listening. So, when it comes to reading the comprehensive plan, you know, the biggest issue it seems to be and, and it really, and again, that's a one hundred and sixty-nine page document of a lot of things, I was like, if I was Havel Trubbe sleeping tonight, I would probably pick this up right away and I'd be great. But there is such information that you have to be able to know where it's at in there and I need to review it, I really would. The biggest issue when they're talking about the industrial growth of Canby, you know, there's this finite between, there's the two things we're missing right now and it's the housing. And we know we need the housing and, and that's the crisis in America right now is housing. But it's where are we gonna get it in the city of Canby when the urban growth, we're sort of preserving more, my understanding was we're preserving more for that industrial. And we're doing a lot more that's just outside of town, it's set up for the industrial side, so the population shouldn't really change too much within Canby, but yet we still have a certain amount of land within our urban growth boundary. And for some reason, twelve thousand's coming to mind or something, or twelve hundred acres that's, that is set aside for this. That, as I'm reviewing it, it's like, it seems like we're being limited in a lot of ways by factors above us on how we're gonna grow. With statewide planning, it's things like that. Again, when I look at something that says this is our plan for the next twenty years, the thing I didn't read in it, and again, I could be completely wrong, so I'm prefacing that, is how do we audible when things aren't going according to that plan? What, what's our process and this is stuff I don't know, that's the question that came to my mind is, it's great, we're kind of laying this out, but we all know that the best laid plans never come to fruition, so, and, and this is not my expertise. So I don't know how we audible from that when things aren't working. How we can better advocate at the higher level to get things to work in our favor? To be able to actually, and again, like I said, my concern is some of the industrial, you know, that's coming in. If we, it doesn't necessarily bring people living to town, but that also doesn't improve the viability of our town when we're talking about like small businesses and things like that and keeping them fresh and keeping them new. So, while it highlights the positivity of the industrial, that it doesn't increase the population, at the same token, like, what's gonna support the local restaurants after a certain period of time? What's gonna support our local businesses unless we have some sort of growth going on and what does that look like? So, those are the first things that came up with the comprehensive plan. Other than that, as far as when it deals with some of the other city problems, you know, a lot of what I've been sort of paying attention to is obviously the traffic. We're looking at issues with, as far as our departments maintaining what we currently have as far as our city's infrastructure, whether it be, you know, we're trying to grow parks and recs right now, we're trying to get those to increase in size. The community itself, if you pop onto any social media, which I never post, but I, it's a great like front row tickets to the circus. I love it because you get a lot of people's opinion, but it's emphatic. So you don't know which, where you're at and that's part of where the public input is so important. But you have a very high emphasis on parks and rec right now from a lot of the community members. How are we going to accommodate what that wants to make the city more livable, to bring more people into town? Because that's what people are looking at when it comes to, they're, they're not getting houses with five acres of land anymore, they're getting a house that they want to park right next door. You know, I think I probably digressed a little bit off of the topic on that a little bit.
It's all good.
Yeah.
You're good.
So, Parks and Rec is a big hot button topic for the town, you know, obviously like we're looking at our pool and how old the pool is, we're looking at, you know, traffic's the hot button topic too, it's, it's fun to listen to, so, yeah. I'll just end at that. Again, I'm not the most knowledgeable on everything going on.
The fact that you even read some of the comprehensive plan is fantastic because I haven't even read all of it and I've been doing this for a long time, so you're good.
Somebody else hasn't read it all. I like the pictures in the back.
It's, sometimes it's the staying awake part, yes. Any follow-up questions from Councilor Patton or Mr. Anderson's answers? No, okay. Next question is from Council President Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Anderson, what is your knowledge and understanding of urban renewal? And do you support the closure of Canby's Urban Renewal District?
Zero. I have no real good knowledge of that at all.
Okay. You mentioned earlier as a citizen, wondering why things were spent the way they were spent or whatever, you know. So, some of those things on social media might be things like an arch or
Right.
things like that, so, do you know of any projects that you can point to that would be like, that was an urban renewal project? Do you even have that level of understanding as to what the Urban Renewal Agency does?
So, the parts that come to mind for me was especially like First Street. That's the first thing that comes to my mind is when we were talking about refacing the buildings on First. And we were trying to make the whole entire, and it sucks because we're separated with a railroad track, but like, as you're rolling through downtown Canby to have the signage, the postings, the, the facade of the buildings look updated. You know, the American Legion was a hot button, button topic at the time for a while because of how that exterior facade looked, but yet we were able to provide the funding to go ahead and improve all of that so that Canby looks more appealing to those coming through town and it provides a little bit better view, so to speak. That's what comes to mind when I hear those words. Yeah.
And you're right, those are all projects that were urban renewal, so
Yeah.
you, you hit the nail there, so.
I mean, we have to be careful with urban renewal to a point, I mean, obviously, this is part of that fiscal responsibility. Where is that money going, what is the overall impact it's gonna do? I think that anything we're doing to improve the attractiveness and livability of town, like, you know, improvements to Wake Park, bringing that, having what we have going on there are things that definitely need to be supported by the community and definitely are things that the community seems to want to support. It's just how we go about ensuring that it's not for show, but truly has a positive impact and a long-lasting result.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any follow-up? No, okay. Councilor Davis?
Thanks for coming, Jason.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The city has a goals and objectives that we set every year and of course, that's coming up here in February for the city council. Have you had a chance to look at those goals that the city council has, has set?
I do believe I read them, but I thought they were two thousand twenty-two was the only thing that was posted.
Okay, all right. So based upon some of those goals and objectives, what, what would you say would be the, the, the top three that would interest you?
As far as the participation and things like that. So, when you're dealing with, and again, I mean, I have my P-cheat on the goals and values of the city council and all that, so. The things that interest me the most honestly is the, and this is where I come from, but is, is my, my work exposure, my work experience doing what I do. And I know that you have a seat at the table for dealing with emergency management and moving forward with the town. That is something that does interest me because that's what I do for a living, I mean, that's, that's something that does it. The, the economic development of the town is something that interests me to a point, but I have zero knowledge and background on that, really, that's something that would be drinking from a fire hose as well. And, and I'll be honest, when I looked at the, the, the kind of, I knew a question like this would come up, like, what is it you would want to do if you're allowed to be doing it? The reality is, I don't have any hopes or wishes and it goes back to the other question where I can ask or want to do something, but the reality is, I feel like you're going to basically, we're gonna all discuss, we're gonna meet, we're gonna talk, and then you're basically gonna say, this is what you get to do. And I have to be prepared for that, whether or not my desire is to do this or my desire is to do that. If I said, you know, Councilor Davis, I'd like to take over any responsibilities with the fire district, what would your response be?
Yes.
See, I'd say you'd be like, no, I'm good with that, so, you know.
I was gonna say.
That's kind of that part where I'm like, wait a minute. Like, hold on a minute here. So, that's kind of where I looked at it and, and I'll go back to like when I got my canine. And it's a little bit of an analogy, but when I went back to get my dog, I didn't get any say in who my dog was gonna be. There was twenty-six dogs in crates, everybody started looking at all the dogs. They started going, oh my gosh, I really like this one, oh, that name is really cool, all this. I didn't look at a single one of them because, again, you start looking a puppy in the eyes and what happens? I mean, you start thinking like, this is my dog, right? Well, after they interviewed me and they sat there and they talked to me for a little bit, they basically said like halfway through the interview, like, why do you want to be a canine handler? And I'm like, well, because I've always wanted to do this. And I'm like, "Well, because I've always wanted to do this." And I could see they start yawning and they start doing this. And I'm like, "Okay, so we're doing an OBS answer, right?" And they're like, "Yeah." And I said, "Okay, because I wanna challenge. I'm bored." "Oh, challenge? Here's your dog." And I was like, "Whoa, whoa, back that up. I don't know." So, I became my dog, Canine Kiki, and we've been partnering for two years. So, I, I don't know what I don't know, and she's the best dog I've ever had in my entire lifetime. But that was a complete leap of faith. So, I kind of approached that analogy into this where it looked down to like, if you could have your dream, what would it be? I don't wanna make my dream known. I don't wanna do that because, again, being out of my comfort zone is what I'm doing right here, right now. I don't wanna have any expectations or hopes. I just want to be involved and move from there because that's where growth happens. So, I'd rather you decide what I'm gonna do, and I know that kinda almost goes a little bit back with that, but that's gonna make me very uncomfortable. It's gonna put me in a new place. That's where growth happens.
Any follow-ups? No? Council Sterns? I'm sorry.
I was wondering if I got to go this time, I mean.
Did they skip you last time?
No, I skipped, uh, Council Sterns on the first one. Council Maldonado?
I feel like he's just picking on the
So, you're skipping one every time is what's happening there, right? So, you're equitable.
I did it the last time, so I'm, you know.
He's gonna skip two. It's been a long day.
One for, one for three here.
Thank you for coming out tonight. What, if anything, do you feel that the city of Canby is lacking? And now, not as a whole as Canby, just think about committees that we have, the council that's ahead of you right now. What do you feel is lacking?
Hmm. Okay, I'll put it on the table. The one thing that I don't know if we see as the community is the accountability when something goes wrong. And I'll go back to that preface of, and again, I'm just gonna throw it out there because I think we need to be bold and honest, right? When we're having these conversations and you're gonna find out, I'm a pretty direct individual. I try to do it with a level of respect, but I also don't believe in beating around the bush because that's where miscommunication happens. Again, there's been some struggles with city government in Canby. And when, as a community member, when you see the struggles, or you see the, the, what could be perceived as poor behavior or what have you, and this is not just with city council, it goes back to when I first got hired and there was issues with the PD, there was things like that. What you wanna know as a community member is, were they held accountable? Was there a level of accountability? And that's that first step to rebuilding trust. And that's that thing that I don't know if I've ever really truly felt like there was a level of accountability for some things, and I don't know. And again, that kinda goes back to my other part of like, when we make decisions, they're impactful decisions. And if it was a bad decision, what are we doing to make sure the community knows that we are recognizing it was a bad decision and that we can recover from that or re, rehab from that? So, that, that for me is one thing that I would like to see definitely be, or let's not have the reason to be accountable for bad things. You know? I mean, that's kinda the first part, is you just kinda avoid that, and then if you have to go down there, then it's like, okay, let's, let's eat crow when we have to eat crow. And it's, it's okay. I mean, it took me a long time to be able to say, "I just really made a mistake."
I, I have heard that word come out of your mouth quite a few times during this interview, the accountability aspect of it. And I, I feel like you've been watching quite a bit from the sidelines, so you, you are aware.
Yeah.
Any follow-up questions off of that? No? Now, I'll go to Council Sterns.
This, little background on this question, but what I've noticed a lot, and I actually do this for a living, is, is, is people, many people feel a very big disconnect with the government. They have befuddled by how it works. They get, they sometimes think government's picking on them and they're not sure who to call. I work with the IRS, so it's a very, a lot of it's me knowing who to call and that sort of thing, but there, but it gives a, sort of a knowledge advantage that I have, other people have versus, but there's a lot of people out there who don't know who to call. They're afraid to call the cops because they think they, the cops might arrest them for various things and other, and so there's this huge, I think, distrust of government. And so, what would you do or what do you think about ways to make it so that ordinary citizens that may lack education, may lack the, the, the knowledge of how government works on the inside? How, how would you help them out to interact with the city of Canby when they might, people write out who think maybe, "Why try? Because, you know, I don't even know who to talk to, don't know who to, or whether they even listen to me or not."
So, I just wanna make sure I have it correct because there was a good, long explanation that kind of associates with that. So, I kinda heard a couple different issues going on with that question. One, it seemed to be, first of all, as, as being part of city government, if somebody was to approach you either questioning, concerned, or had wanted more information about the government, you know, you were kinda highlighting that you had this knowledge of the IRS and know how to work, but some people don't have or know where to get that information from. Like, how would we help them out with that? The other part I thought I heard out of that question, it seemed like it was two parts, was how do we get people either more engaged or to be part of the process when it comes to city government? Is kinda what I got out of it.
Yeah. And mainly, it's how do we get that knowledge of how the government works to the people so they're not frustrated and go for extra government solutions? Like, you know, instead of calling the code department, maybe slashing the tires of the person next to them? I mean, that's an extreme example, but you know.
Yeah, you mean like navigating the, yeah. How do you get through the 750-step phone tree? Yeah. So, boy, that's, that's a pretty loaded question for me. So, inherently, it is always difficult, and you can look at most places that, to understand, I'm gonna go back to that first question that I had earlier. In order to understand, you have to participate to a certain level. You can't sit on the sidelines and always just ask the questions like I've done for many years when it comes to this particular part of my world, when it comes to government. When you wanna talk about the city of Portland, I'm embedded deep in a lot of things that are going on with that because that's the nature of what I do with my job. I chose to not actively participate as much as I probably should have for the majority of time that I've been in the city to learn more and become more actively involved and better understand the workings of the government as far as in here. The hard part is, is how do you get a message to people when they have other priorities in life? When it becomes their priority, they want to know about it. So, again, it kinda goes back to how can the city council or how can the city of Canby appeal to the community as a whole? It's that root cause thing. Like, how do you make people want to know more initially? Instead of it being a have-to-know-more at this moment where to them it's a crisis, when the reality is, could you have avoided that crisis all along? So, I don't have the answer to that. That's, that's why places pay millions of dollars to be able to appeal to certain people in order to get them motivated to do it. When it comes to being more familiar with the city of Canby, again, social media's a funny thing. You can put information out on social media, you can put information out on your website, but again, it, it has to be extracted by that person. They have to have that want or that desire, or it's passively being consumed by that individual. So, how do you ensure that what they're passively consuming is the right information and it's this? I don't have the answer for it. That is one heck of a problem. And, and there's no easy way to go about that. I mean, that, that's one of those things that you're looking at. Money has to be spent in order to do that. If you're just simply wondering like, when somebody has a flat tire, who do they get ahold of? You know?
Or a pothole, or...
Or a pothole? Yeah. I mean, it has to be simplistic. When you think about the world nowadays, everything is immediate. You know? Everything is immediate. I need to figure it out now. Everybody's, it's a crisis. You know? The first thing that comes to my mind when you're talking about making things immediate? Apps. Where's our City of Canby app that has the seven buttons on it? Pothole, traffic problem, this, that. You have to make it simple. And all of us, and, and I, and I hope I can say this with love, we're in a certain generation level, but we're not the ones that are the up-and-coming generation that, that truly, it's not our way of doing it, it's their way of doing it. And that's something I've had to learn over time as we've hired a new generation of folks at our agency that don't understand what a spark plug is, that have never operated a two-stroke motor, and we're having to now go, "I don't understand." Again, as, as things are happening and the world is changing, we're all of a certain demographic that we have this certain baseline, that we think of things how we think. It's soliciting their opinion. Hey, 18, 19-year-old, what makes it easiest for you to get ahold of us when you have a problem? For them, looking at my son, done. That's about the amount of effort he wants to provide, but the hours of complaining if you can't do a two-button push will last for days and weeks about how they couldn't get what they wanted. So, again, that's what we have to kind of think about is, who is that target audience for certain things? And sometimes you have to have two or three ways to do that, to solve that problem. One, one demographic wants a two-button push, the other demographic wants to have an online filling, and the other people have no idea how to operate the computer and want a, you know, a phone tree to push one, push four, push seven and do that. So, that's a great problem. I hope I answered it.
Thank you.
Just, if you're gonna make an app and you're gonna use it, can I get the royalties?
And I get the last question, which is, what questions do you have for us?
If you appoint me, I plan on making appointments with each of you, and I have about 150 to ask each of you at all, any given time. No, that's literally what I came in prepared to do was, I know that you're, have a process in place to decide what you're gonna do, who you're gonna appoint and how that's gonna kinda look forward. I already did my research on that part. My goal would be to save most of those questions for if appointed, then I think we're gonna be either be drinking a lot of coffee or having some good long, hopefully some very long conversations because there's a lot to learn.
Absolutely.
So.
Great. Thank you, sir. Really appreciate it. You're welcome. We've got one more candidate to interview. You're welcome to stay here in the, in the auditorium and watch that person go through that process, and then we'll lay out what happens next.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good evening, mayoring counselors.
Good evening. How are you, sir?
Good.
Well, thank you for applying and for being here this evening. So, kinda the format this evening, you were sent the kinda three questions in advance? You did get those?
Yes.
Perfect. Kind of a new, we'll say, addition to the process is then after those three core questions, then each of the counselors have a question that they'll ask you.
Okay.
There very well may be follow-up questions within any of the questions that are asked of you, so we're judging you on your nimbleness and how quick you are on your feet.
Okay.
So, the first question we have for you is, for you to tell us a little bit about yourself and what appeals to you about being on the city council?
Scott Sassy, 1440 South Ivy. Grew up in the Hubbard Aurora area, went to North Rand High School, went to Colacumis Community College for a couple of years, was a grass seed farmer. My family owns Hubbard Seed and Supply, so I did that till I was about 30. Ground started getting sold off to housing developments. I got out, started doing landscaping, miniature farming. Met my wife, Teresa, she's here. We have three kids, Courtney, doctor at Dornbeckers, Emily, works for the city of Canby. Hope that doesn't hurt. Garrett is at Baylor University using his master's right now, so he'll be done hopefully in May and then get a job. My wife owns Pudding River Chocolates. I am a landscaper in town here, landscape maintenance. Came to Canby in 82. I've been here ever since. Got into, not really city politics, but I started coming to council meetings in the old shop down at Old City Hall. Probably two mayors before you were elected, and you've been here forever. So, just, I just wanted to know what was going on in the city. I think you have to go, you have to listen. I mean, I remember when they stopped the meetings because the train was coming through. You couldn't hear in that building. You can still hear it a little bit here, but not bad. Started going to meetings. One day, I thought, "Okay, let's start a board." So, I got on Parks and Rec. I've enjoyed it to this day. In fact, one of the saddest things about running for this, I'm gonna miss that board. I think we're a really powerful group. We've got good people. We come up with good ideas. We've got a lot of projects in the works. I hope to help them get those down the road. And then, last year, I became president on the budget committee, thanks to Councilor Paddan. That was kind of a railroaded thing, but it went okay. At least I didn't have to get up on the dais. That was eye-opening. I think everybody needs to do that at least for a year, just to see how the city works, what goes on, what doesn't. And then, I feel really bad. I applied for transit. I did that back in October before I thought about running for council, so that'll be the shortest board member term ever in Canby because I just got approved
Yeah.
Last week and, sorry. So, I told Woods, Todd, "Sorry." So, here I am, but, and I think it's time now, as far as serving, I think it's time to step up to the adult table. I don't know how much more intelligence I could get. I, I think I've got enough on the boards where I know city staff. I'm friends with a lot of them. I know all you guys I consider personally. I don't know what more I can do for those except the next step. So, here I am.
Okay. Thank you, sir. What do you think are the most pressing concerns in the city of Canby today? And what do you think may be some ways to address those concerns?
Well, there's a lot. I know that we're, we're gonna be close. I hope not, but I think we're gonna have budget shortfalls. So, we need to get city revenue up. I don't know how. I'm, I asked a question of somebody the other night. I said, "Could we raise STC fees?" Everything else is going up. That seems like a common sense thing to do right off the bat. It probably would help if we spent less money. I think there's a lot of waste in this community. I know we wanna get a lot of stuff done, but if we don't have the money, let's not I think that's probably the bit, you know, roads are always, I mean, everybody talks about roads. That's, and I agree. I mean, I have a, if you sat on my trailer every day after work, you'd go, you, you couldn't walk the next day. I think that would help if we, I know Councilor Paddan, street fees. They haven't went up since we started them. I don't know why that, why that hasn't went up. Parks and Rec fee goes up so much a year, like a 3% or whatever. That needs to be done. Our roads are horrible. Now, I know that there's, you know, everybody's talking about 99. That's out of our, that's not really our jurisdiction now, but it's gonna happen, but we gotta get that Ivy thing fixed. But we gotta get that Ivy thing fixed. I was coming home from work coming up 13th. The short little stub to where I live, just right across from whole village, four lights it took me tonight to get to my house. That was at 3:00. So that's another thing. That's never gonna work. Remote work is a big issue in town right now. It's not just me talking. And when I say stuff, when I bring up an issue, it's not just me talking. I talk to a minimum of 50 people a day, whether it be customers, business owners, friends. That's a big thing. And I know it's, I've been to enough council meetings. I know Councilor Patton wanted data on that and stuff and, but it's really true. A lot of people, they just think about that. At the time, I think it was great. It's what we needed. I think we're past that time. When companies like Amazon and them are calling their employees back, what's that tell you? So I think we're in the public sector. I think they need to be here. We built this beautiful building. Everybody in this room is paying taxes on it. Let's get them back in here and get stuff done. Our codes, I know you guys are working on updating them. I still think we need to, we need to stay on that. There's some codes and I really know the landscape codes in town. When Canby Utility was first built, I drove by that and I said, who in the world planted all those plants? And no offense, but it looked like Vietnam because I know what it takes to prune every one of those grasses. They're horrible. And that's a huge expense. I can't even imagine, I used to do all the Canby utility sites in Canby. I can't imagine what their landscape budget is. Horrible. And there's no color. I don't think there's one plant in there that flowers. So we're the garden spot. I get that. But same with First Avenue. I think that was an overkill. And I was on that committee until all of a sudden they said, Scott, we don't need you anymore. We're gonna do what we want. And it was completely what we not wanted. So I think that's, there's a few. There's a bunch, but I could be here all night talking about that.
Thank you, sir. Follow-up questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Councilor Sterns.
You may have already answered it, but you mentioned that you think Canby has a lot of waste and can you be specific of what you considered waste besides the landscaping?
Well, I think, you know, we've hired 10 people, I can't remember the, I think we've hired 10 new people in, you know, a lot of people in town call this the ivory tower now. I said, it's not the ivory tower, it's city hall, but we've hired 10 new people, I think, since, within a year. I think that's too many. When we have more people in finance than we do in the streets division, there's something wrong with that, my friend. I'll argue with anybody that till midnight. I don't get that. And public works, like I say, I work with all these, it's not just I know them as friends, I work with them. I do landscaping, I work with parks. I do a couple of parks on the side just as a community service. I clean it up myself because I know they can't get to everything. But that, that just blows my mind how that even happens. So that's, that's part of the waste thing that I'm talking about.
Thank you, sir. Do you have some specific goal or improvement you would like to make in Canby as a result of serving on the Canby City Council?
Well, I'd like to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start this. It's kind of a chain reaction when it happens. I know the fair is starting their event center complex so we can get the kids back in there with their 4A channel and stuff. If that happens, you're gonna get more events because that building is gonna be nice and big. If we get that and the so-called sports complex, I'd really like to see that come to town too. I think that's, they're just a major, they're just a positive thing for a city. They really are. I remember when we had the big soccer tournament years ago, it's probably been 15 years now. You were working at Starbucks, they ran you out of items. They ran Subway out of items. It's, it's a huge thing to a downtown. Not just the restaurants, but the gas, the coffee shops, every, everything. And if they're here and they're close and they see something they like, they might come back. So if you have those two things going, the next thing we know, and this is really important, a hotel. We gotta keep people in town. We don't want them to keep going out. We want them to stay here. That helps too. Revisit the street fee. I think our senior services are lacking. I'd like to see the adult center and the pool, both have money, but they don't, they're not really interested in putting the money forth until we own the property. That triplex thing of the school owning the property, the city owning the building and they paying rent, we've gotta address that. We really do. School does not, schools are great, but they don't need to own property. Parks projects, like I say, I'd like to, I'd like to see those. We being in the parks division, we have a, we call it a wheel. We're close to getting a thing done. Let's put another thing in there. Not that we want it, we expect to get them all done in that year, but we want a steady idea of stuff coming down the pipe, as our master plan said. Dog park, we're trying, we're hopefully, we're gonna get maple done this year. We just looked at a thing for, called a pedal park down by the police department. That cleans up another area. Everything we try to, Auburn Hills, which we've, we say we promised, but we need a park over there now. We've got all those new homes, so we need to get that done. And then Harmony and City Hall in the council. We know for years, this was, the dais was a debacle. I've sat in those back seats and saw it. I think we're getting there. I can appreciate you guys to agree to disagree and it's so nice to go home and not know everybody hates everybody when you walk out the door. It's fantastic.
Thanks, Ross.
So that's what I have for that.
Okay. Any follow-up questions at all? No? Okay. So first question for you from the council comes from Councilor Patton.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I, this question speaks to your research or knowledge of what is currently going on in the city. Can you tell me about some of the projects the city is currently working on, including but not limited to the comprehensive plan update, which will ultimately lead to the urban growth boundary expansion? So what you know of what's been done up to this point for the cop plan, what we're kind of doing, where we go to next? Have you been to any of the community meetings, that sort of thing?
I was to the first one. I missed the second one. I was ill, but I'm gonna go to the third one. I believe you're moving it to Baker Prairie?
Yes.
Now, the comprehensive plan, is that what Don has been talking about the last? Okay, yes. I hear that. It's mind-boggling, let me tell you. It's a lot to absorb without having the paperwork in front of you. I try and pick pieces from when you guys are talking. That's all I can say to that. But I do know what's coming. I, I've seen Don. I think he's been here three times talking about that. I don't know if he, did he talk about that at the last meeting you had at the police department? I think he did a little bit.
Yes, the mapping exercise?
Yes, yes, okay. So that's all I can tell you about that.
Okay.
Great. Any follow-up questions at all? You good there, Councilor Patton?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Council President Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sassy, what is your knowledge and understanding of urban renewal? And second part, do you support the closure of Canby's Urban Renewal District?
I tell, I, a lot of, it's amazing how more people know about than, than they say in town. I tell people, I tease with them, I said, the urban renewal district is like the Bible. It's how you wanna interpret it. There's so many interprets. I still don't think anybody, I would say the most expertise guy in this town, other than Jim, I still, I think you're second. But Tim Dale could really explain urban renewal. He really could. And I miss that guy immensely on the dais. I think what it was dedicated for to begin with, it was to help the city and the businesses for improvements. I think there's been some projects. I still think a big thing of that was when you spend the money on something, it was to improve that, take away blight, which First Avenue was a good candidate for that. Cleaned up the avenue, although it almost broke our business when we were on First Avenue. Took away the power poles. But the main thing that I've always thought of it, it was supposed to build something or enhance something that was to bring tax dollars back. And there's a lot of projects that didn't bring tax dollars back. No offense, but the police department doesn't bring tax money, but that was a lot of money. First Avenue really did so that they can cover that. But it still amazes me to this day, when you guys bring something up, how you or the city of Canby is gonna do a project, urban renewal qualifies for that, but it doesn't qualify for this. I think even, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think we can even use a little bit of that on Maple Street Park. I thought we were told we could use a little bit of that on, maybe not. So, and I think it was supposed to, it, I think industrial parks great. It really helped the industrial park. But I think, I think it's time to shut it down. I think we got our money's worth out of it. Now, if maybe with this sports complex, maybe we need to bring another one. But now we know what we did right and we did wrong with that, we could tweak it. We'll just have to see, but I, I think it's ready to sunset. It'll help our general fund, which we need the money. It'll help the fire district, which they need the money. Everybody needs money. Nobody's gonna turn money away. So that's what I know about that.
Thank you.
Follow-up questions at all? Yes, Councilor Davis.
No question.
No? Okay. Oh, you're next. Would you like to ask your question, sir?
I wanted, I wanted you to forgive me.
Nope. I get everybody. I'm at 500, so we're good.
Okay. Scott, thanks for coming and thanks for applying.
You're welcome.
Please tell us, you know, we do a goal-setting thing.
Yep.
Yeah, and that's coming up in February. Please tell us, on those goals, the three top projects in which you, you feel the city or the three top projects of the goals and objectives? And how would you, how do you feel about those three top goals in your mind?
I think the sports complex is huge. It's still in the dark as far as the public knows. Some people know that, I think that's huge. My big concern is, I hope we can maintain it. Canby is known for building things and not being able to maintain it. But there's no doubt, we need that. I think if we're gonna do that, I think we, I'd like to see us maybe throw a aquatic center in and a teen rec center in with it. If we're gonna do it, let's make it big. Let's do it, either do it right or go home. Little stuff, revisit the street fee, the code thing still. I'd like to see, I'd like to see us get on board with a hotel, but what scares me is if a hotel was really needed here, I think you'd have suitors talking to us. But I still think, once all this stuff is done, if we get to that point, we need it. One of my biggest things, and I think it's coming down the road, I've talked about it in Parks and Rec, Wade Park's our living room. Whether you agree with me or not, Wade Park needs to be redone. It's 75 years old. And once we start cutting a tree, we're gonna hear it. But folks, I love trees as much as anybody. But when you go into Wade Park on a rainy day, a heavy rain day, and there's two inches of water standing on the ground, that's not good for anything. So to do it right, and everybody says, well, can we piecemeal it? I hate piecemeal. We either do it and get it done, and it could be a two-year project, and it could be $5 million. Now, I'm just, I'm close, but don't quote me on the prices. Yeah. But that's gonna have to be addressed. It really is. That's our centerpiece. You want people downtown, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any follow-up questions at all?
I actually have a follow-up to that. You've mentioned many times about this all is gonna take money and it's something that the city doesn't have.
Yep.
What do you think is the appetite of citizens to pay more money for these services?
If they get it, if it's done, I don't mind paying to my customer, the people that I hear that I talk to, they'll pay. It's like going to a restaurant, Jason. Excuse me, Councilor Patton.
You're fine.
It's like going to a restaurant. You don't mind paying $40 for a steak if that steak is the best steak you've had. I don't mind paying. My friends don't mind paying. Pudding River Chocolates just bought a little cookie roller thing to cut out cookies instead of going like this. But we need it. And it's, in the long run, it's gonna pay off. So, you know, I think that's a big thing we've talked about, is how can we get more revenue? And let's spend a little less too. So.
Any other follow-up? Okay. Councilwoman O'Neal.
Hey, there you go. Good seeing you, Scott.
Thank you.
What, if anything, do you feel is lacking within the city of Canby? And that could be within the dais here, within any, one of our multiple committees. What do you feel is lacking?
I think we're getting better. I'll tell you when I really started coming to council meetings is because the TV, the IT thing was horrible. I mean, I came in here at 9:00 one morning, yelled, nobody was here. I yelled, they said, what are we doing? When I can't watch it at home, I almost came down a couple of times in my pajamas because I couldn't watch the thing. And it was a really important meeting that I wanted to hear what was going on, staying in touch again, and I couldn't hear that. That's one. But it's getting better. I think we're getting there. I really do. I, everybody's, it's just, you know, we had three years where everybody was just beaten down and everybody's employees, staff. I think we ask too much of staff. I think sometimes we can figure it out on our own. They got enough work to do. So I think sometimes we overburden them with stuff. I think those are the main things right now that I can think of off the top.
Thank you.
Yeah, just preface, preface my question a little bit. A lot of people, both for the, in government in general, have a hard time interacting with the government. It's a big mystery. People get, you've talked about already, get frustrated and, you know, what are those people doing? How do I get something done? And a lot of times, people in this room, we have an advantage because we've been around, we know a little bit of who to talk to and, and who to call. How would, how would you make the government of Canby, not just the government, but the mysteries and the more clear to the citizens and help the citizens understand, be able to have a bridge of trust with the, with the city government? So it's not this mystery that people complain about, but not know how to do anything?
That's a good question. First of all, I think it's communication. The Canby Herald used to have an article in, I think, the first or second page stating when the council meeting was, when the planning commission was. That's gone. I even missed that. The city, the people of Canby really do care, but if they don't know about it, I mean, I've told people, hey, come to this meeting, we're talking about that. They forget about it. So you have to have a little investment in yourself too. You gotta, you gotta step forward and help yourself too. I'll help anybody, but you gotta help yourself. So I, you know, I still remember in the old council chambers, there was never a night less than 20 people in there. People really cared. I know the town was smaller, but still, you had involvement. Now, the only time you see this place packed is when somebody's got a gripe and they bring in their mob to try and bully everybody. I mean, how many meetings have Jerry and I been, the only ones in the back? If you really care about Canby, come once in a while. Just, I'm not saying you have to come to every meeting, but how about you come one, how about you come to two meetings a year? You might be surprised what you learn. But as, communication is huge. I'll tell you one thing, we want people on boards. You know how hard it is to get on a board? I signed up for Transit in October. I finally got approved January. I mean, yeah, January. That's too long. One month. We want people on boards, but we gotta be more, we gotta be better to them. It took me six months to get on Parks and Rec. And no offense, I know everybody. So let's, let's, if we want these boards filled, let's, let's speed it up and get it going.
Any additional follow-up questions at all? No? Scott, I get the last question. Do you have any questions for us?
I had a question today. I, I wanted to ask this. Do you think, do you think council is a political thing or just a, you're being a good Samaritan to the city of Canby, a good steward, and you're volunteering as a volunteer?
Are you asking each of us? Is that a question for each of us or?
Yeah, kind, just general, yeah, just a general. I mean.
That is a great question. Yes, I think it's about being a servant of the community. I think that's where, have, have there been times where it's the pendulum is swung the other way? Yeah. I think that that's been the case.
Yeah.
But all in all, it's, I mean, I don't think there's a single person up here that doesn't wanna see a better Canby. There are soon to be seven distinct ideas on what that is.
Yeah.
How that gets achieved and what is that gonna look like in the future? And so I think if we keep that in mind, I think, you know, one of the other candidates also brought up the, kind of the, the recent shift where the council seems to be a little bit more amiable with each other currently than more in the recent history. And that's, that's how it really should be. We should not be up here throwing hand grenades at each other and tearing each other down on social media.
Yes.
Or out in, you know, the general public.
I, I and the citizens of Canby really got tired of this side and that side. I'm on, I'll fight with Councilor Patton, I'll fight with Councilor Davis. I'm on, I'll fight with Councilor Patton, I'll fight with Councilor Davis if I think they're wrong.
Well, and you fought with me.
And I'll fight with you.
Yeah.
Don't you fight with me, though?
No. There were meetings canceled that I, I'm sorry to say, I called you up, I said, what the hell are we doing? We got too much stuff to talk about, and I had no dog in the fight. But in closing, I just gotta say, this, these are the best four guys I've seen, gentlemen, apply for this position in a long time. I think you got four really good people. So I think my only advantage is I've put the time in, I've been on the boards. If you wanna, if you wanna get to this point, get on a board. It's amazing what you'll learn. You meet new friends. Go talk to the, walk downtown, talk to everybody. You wanna hear an earful, go talk to Pappy. So. In closing, don't, don't pick a person, pick the best person for the job. Period. That's it.
Great. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
Appreciate you being here.
So to just kind of wrap this segment up, so. Just to kind of reiterate for you gentlemen, hopefully, you know, you're aware of the time commitment that it, it means to be on the council. It's not just the two meetings a month, there's a lot of prep time that goes into it. There's, I think the best thing I can say is the, the, the time and effort that you wanna put into it is what you'll get out of it. It can be as little or as much as you want. There's a number of us up here that have probably. You know, I looked at my calendar just for the month of January and. Should have my head examined on some of the things that. But if you're wanting Canby to be the best that it can be, then you need to get involved. And sometimes that is on a grander scale than just here in the city. It is on a regional county, and unfortunately, it's getting to be the state level. Someone will be chosen and three people will not. Please take a look at our committees. Get involved. Be aware of our, the comp plan meetings that are coming up. It's a big deal. The comp plan. It's all the nuts and bolts and the kitchen sink and what we hope to achieve as a city. And it, we do, we have to check and adjust yearly on what, what are aspirational and what can actually be achieved. But it does start with our committees. We have very active committees, and we do value their opinions. Do we agree all the time? No, Scott has just stated. I was the liaison to the Parks Committee for almost two years, and there were a number of meetings that I got shelled. But that's part of, part of what the process is. So those are two areas that I think, you know, three of you would definitely, I think, add value. So we're gonna move out of our work session, we're gonna take a, a brief break. And then the council will convene, which will end up being a, a council meeting to discuss our, you know, each person's top two candidates, or, and then we'll have a decision here this evening. So that's where we're at. Am I leaving anything out, Eileen? Counsel, did I leave anything out?
Sounds right.
So we're gonna take. Cupertino says it's eight twenty, so we'll take a, we'll take a seven-minute break, so we'll start at eight, eight twenty-seven. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll get going here in five, four. Good evening, Canby. Welcome to our special city council meeting for the tenth of January. We just came out of a work session interviewing four candidates for the open city council seat. Now we will move into our regular meeting to discuss, discuss the potential city councilors. And so our four candidates were David Tate, Eric Van Zant, Jason Anderson, and Scott Sassy. Again, thank you all for applying and interviewing for this prestigious honor. And I will say, as we get into this conversation, careful what you wish for. I'll leave it at that. So what we decided at our last council meeting in terms of the process and how to move through this was to open up the dialogue and begin conversation, not necessarily pros and cons, but a, a conversation of what candidates we felt would be worth discussing and having be up here on the dais with us. And so I'll open it up to the council. I just get to moderate, you all get to pretty much have the conversation and decide. So anyone that wants to go first, I'm all ears. Council President Hensley, looks like you've been nominated to go first.
So we, you just want us to do like, we've done before, just to kind of give you our number one and number two pick?
That's, yeah, that's kind of what I.
Um, they, they, all four candidates presented good points and had some good answers. There were some gaps with all of them as well. But in terms of, if I were to use Council Patton's term rank, I think my number one candidate would be Mr. Sassy, and my number two would be Mr. Anderson.
Okay. Thank you. Don't all jump at one time.
All right, you to my right. My right hand man.
Then there we go. I would agree, I think we had four absolutely great candidates, and thank you again all for showing up and essentially just telling us, giving us your two cents on, on the situation at hand. I would also agree with Council President Hensley that the top two were Scott Sassy and Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
I guess I'm next then, by default, the way we're going? Um, I guess for me, one of the things that I always wanted out of, because I will say this many times, I've been through this process quite a bit. And with any interview process, I've always wanted to hear more about my performance during that interview, to get a better understanding for next time. Because trust me, there's gonna be a next time. So for me, I think some of the things that, that stood out to me was, for folks who are applying for this position, it is really key to do your research ahead of time. Some folks did that more so than others. I think that's really important, especially with the comp plan coming up, that is a huge undertaking. As far as the time commitment goes, I can speak to what the mayor said earlier, so far this, in total this week, I will have ten hours of extra city council stuff going on. So that is a, that is a huge bite to take out of your, out of your calendar. For me, for Mr. Tate, I really liked his background that he's had in other municipalities and in serving on various boards. I think he'd do a very good job as we go through our, the comp plan process and the urban growth boundary expansion. For Mr. Van Zant, I appreciate his willingness to step up to the plate in the face of adversity. And his talk about, you know, saying this is one of his bucket list items. That is sort of how I got into doing all of this, and so I really appreciate where you're coming from with that. For Mr. Anderson, I really enjoy how upfront and honest you are. You clearly have a very methodical way of doing things, and that is, that would be very important on a board like this. And for Mr. Sassy, you know, you've been around the block a number of times. You have been involved in the community for many, many years, and that depth and breadth of knowledge really lends itself to the processes that we are coming up against. So all that being said, I think for me, it's kind of tough. I figured there would be one clear, like, one ring to rule all rings. And in the end, I would say that for, I would be tied with Mr. Sassy and Mr. Tate as my first picks, and then Mr. Anderson is my second. And I do hope that whoever does not get on, there are many other boards and commissions that you can get involved in. Especially getting involved with these meetings as we go into the comp plan process. And it will help you navigate this to see if this is something you wanna do, because as many of you said, it's only a few months away before this all starts being run again, and there will be four open positions on council. So that's that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, Council Davis. First of all, I do wanna thank all four people that applied tonight for your time and interest in the position. To me, you all brought something to the table tonight, as I listened to you and, and picked up some ideas as well, listening to you. We also had some very tough questions that, for the people that are not up here, may not have known that. And I, so I think that all of you were very honest and thoughtful in regards to your responses to those questions, so good job with that. The people selected, not selected tonight, please get involved. What I learned sitting down there and attending many city council meetings is that when I got involved with Park and Rec and some of the other committees, you can make a huge impact as committee members and as citizens. And you can say a lot more from down there than you can from up here. You know, so remember that. You know, it's. So you need to participate. I would say that my recommendation would be towards Scott Sassy as the number one selection due to his volunteer time, he's well-connected. He listens to the citizens, he brings citizen input to the city council if, if he's appointed tonight. We need to listen to our citizens. We do hear them out on the street, and we bring those, that input back up to the dais and hopefully can make some changes by listening to the citizens. My second person would be Jason Ans, Anderson. I, I did like his answers, but I, what I liked the most was just the fact that he said he was gonna listen for the first six months because he, he had a lot to learn. And then he would judge and decide at that point whether or not he would run for the position. Again, but thank all you guys for coming down tonight.
Council Sterns.
This is, like I say, a difficult choice for me because I think all four, no one struck me as somebody I wouldn't want on the council. And I would be probably happy, even if, wherever the choice of the council is, whether it's my first pick or not. I do like Mr. Tate on his background with serving in the Eagle Scout. I do like math, so I think his math degree was positive in that respect. And he has had a little experience in working with nonprofits, which I think almost all of you do have, what, I consider government to be a nonprofit, you know, because they have a similar accounting structure. And all of you have that experience, which I understand why we can't just take the street fund and use it to pay a police officer or things like that. Which sometimes can be frustrating for people who aren't aware of that, why can't we fund in this pot? I do like Jason, your, I know a lot of practicality on some of the, and experience with being in a police officer and, and the ideas that, that there may be other solutions that maybe us that don't have that perspective can, can, can answer. And Mr. Sassy, I'm really impressed with your community involvement, and you seem to have a very big grasp on the ideas and the issues in the community. In fact, I would say you probably, all of you are probably even more qualified than I am to be on this, on this council. And you, Mr. Van Zant, thank you for, and you have a history of volunteering and helping people out, and I see that as your desire. And I. I would hope that you would all volunteer to work on the commit, the committees here. That's where I got my start here in Canby, and I went off, and it's, um, it's very important that the more people get involved, that, that, and part of my question I asked is I want it not to be some exclusive committee of people that sit behind the curtain, make decisions, but that the more people get involved, the more people can have access to the government. It's a really hard decision. Like I say, I, last council meeting expressed a desire to go mull over some, but if I have to do it right now, I would probably. I think Mr. Sassy would probably be the top pick based on his experience and knowledge, not just knowledge, but he seems to have a good communication with the, with the residents of Canby and have, be able to bring that perspective. I would probably put Jason and Tate as a co-secants on that, just, and, and for different reasons, and you'd have, you'd have different perspectives, that would be, that would, that would help out there. So I guess that's kind of how I would, I would put it there, but again, I would be happy with anybody that's selected and not be disappointed.
My only two cents that I'll add and then move into the next piece of that is not, all four of you gentlemen didn't get to hear everybody. But it was stated, you know, about the idea of, of running for a city council seat. Just as a note, Council Patton, Council President Hensley, myself, and Council Sterns were all appointed initially here on the, on the city council. Council Maldonado.
Elected first.
Elected.
We were re-elected, but yeah, we started out appointed.
Right, and then Council Davis.
Second, for the record, the first time I was on council, I got elected.
That is true.
But I cheated because there was only three of us on the ballot, and so there was only three positions. So I may have still sucked, but I got voted out. This last time, I was appointed after eight tries, so just so you know. Never give up. You can live the council dream.
So. Well, thank, well, what I was just gonna say on that, building into that is I'm, I'm a transplant from southwest Portland and have now lived in Canby for twenty years and got involved. Not too dissimilar than how you gentlemen are getting involved. And so please continue to be involved. I will have coffee, a sandwich, I like sandwiches, you know, at any point and talk about any of the things that, that you all brought up this evening. There were some really, as Council Davis pointed out, there's some really good things brought up, and just kind of a, a recursor to, like, things that, yeah, what, where can we, where can we do better? So. So based on kind of what's been laid out here, it looks like our top two, or at least the consensus to be that Scott Sassy and then Jason Anderson seem to be the two people here that we're kind of tossing between.
Well, Mr. Mayor, to not belabor this any further, I move to appoint Scott Sassy to fill the city council vacancy of Christopher Banks for a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
I will second that.
You have five seconds.
Sorry about that.
So the motion's been made by Council Hensley and seconded by Council Davis and Patton. And Maldonado. To choose to appoint Scott Sassy to fill the council vacancy of Christopher Banks for a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Any discussion? At this point, no other discussion?
I just wanna reiterate one more time. For the ones that were not chosen, please find a, find a position on one of the committees, please.
Well, I mean, with Mr. Sassy's appointment, there's three open positions. Member of Budget Committee, the Parks Board, which is a hot, hot board, and, and Canby, and, and CAT. But hopefully, if you apply to those, we'll speed your applications along, because it's, that's a problem of mine as well.
And Traffic Safety Commission could potentially have one coming up soon, so.
Ways to be involved. So motion has been made and seconded, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Sassy, on being the new appointee to the city council.
Councilor Sassy.
So next council meeting, so next week, the judge will be here to swear you in. We will make sure that he knows that, absolutely. And then from there, you'll work with Eileen and Maya to kind of do your immersion into. And then from there, you'll work with Eileen and Maya to kind of do your immersion into how the sausage is made. And, and then please get with each of us as calendars permit to kind of get your questions answered or share your thoughts and ideas as well. So, because to, what's been said here this evening is, yeah, you kind of hit the ground running. There is, it doesn't stop. We grind slowly, as Mr. Johnson in the back had pointed out to me. But there is still a lot that goes on to get that, that machine going slowly, so.
And be sure to mark off on your calendar February sixteenth, that's our goal-setting session. So you are gonna get right into it.
Okay. Scott, congratulations. Gentlemen, thank you all for applying. Really do appreciate it. That's the only business for this evening. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nay.
I knew it. He wants to stay, he can sleep the floor.
Canby, thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening, we appreciate it.